Wednesday, August ninth, board work session to order. Let's stand and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the reading of the vision statement, please. Richmond Community Schools, a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare students for lives of choice, purpose, and service. Thank you. And the mission?
Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
All right, thank you both. Okay, so next, as we are looking into our work session, we come to item 2.01. Dr. Wright?
President Stolz, trustees, I'm going to ask that RCS police chief, Rick Tholz, join us here at the podium to share with us and update as to where we are with our RCS PD and some of the successes that he and his deputies had in our early stages of school year. Chief Tholz?
Thank you, Dr. Wright. It's been a couple of months, maybe, since I last appeared before you guys, and a lot has been going on, so I lose track of time. But I think it's been a couple of months since I last appeared before you, because you, 14, passed the resolution. You blessed me with naming me your chief of police. We had the goal of being operational by the first day of the kiddo that's coming back to school. There were concerns about timeline. Wanted to here before you today to let you know where we've been on those conversations, what we've accomplished, and give a lot of thanks to a lot of people that got us to the position where I can tell you we've been successful in that goal. Maybe a little bit beyond what we initially set out to accomplish on this first day. Yes, thank you, the central office staff, the SROs who have now been sworn in as additional officers for the schools. Everybody, it's been a blessing to me for these team approaches to accomplish what we have accomplished. Officer Cushing, Officer Dudley, they hit the ground running day one. Uniforms I present to you today that we were able to put on kids like the new threads. They've noticed them right away. They're anxious for the Friday, Monday, shoe day to show up still. They're noticing what they can, the new uniforms. It's been a good experience. It's been good to watch things fall into place in that tight timeline that we have. We knew that going in. We knew we were challenging ourselves, but we'd also don't expect anything less from those of us that are so passionate about the success for Richmond Community Schools. I thank you for trusting me to get us to the point where we're at. I recently emailed copies of 650 pages, but I know those that received it have read everywhere. The completion of a policy manual for the Richmond Community Schools Police Department. Policy manual has been acknowledged by all the officers. That was a goal. We want our officers not only to be outfitted and properly equipped, but we also want them to be operating under proper policies. So we did accomplish that goal down to the wire, but prior to the first days of school, we completed that policy. Moving forward, we are in the process of interviewing for our board opening that we historically have not been able to fill. I am pleased with the interest that has been shown for that position, the applications and interviews that we've conducted here recently. So I hope in future updates to tell you about the new hires as well for the department. But again, thank you to all of you for your trust. Thank you for the central office team that's been hand in hand in helping do research, putting things in place publicly. Thank you. Want to thank the other officers that have gone on this venture with us. They are excited. I think honestly, as exciting as this venture has been, we're more excited about interacting with the kids again. It's been a good three days. Yes, the honeymoon was over as of today, but it's been a good three days back with the kids in the building, building those relationships, having those interactions, seeing what is to come next. So again, wanted to meet with you guys, give you the update on where we're at, but I also know it's also important to open up with questions for things that you may be thinking, may be concerned about, or have questions of the person to be addressed.
Yeah, so let's do that. Questions for Chief Tholz.
So what difference have you seen this year with, or have you seen a difference? Being able to interact with the kids more, anything like that, or is it still kind of same thing?
I was telling the school staff earlier today that I had not been hired at this point last year. That first week of the school year is a new experience for me. But at the same time, the 10th graders, 11th graders, 12th graders that are familiar and have started to build that trust with the officers that they have in their buildings, we're able to pick them all up and run. It's been a good first three days. Those relationships, even the new students to our buildings, they've been able to start working on that rapport between us and the student body. It's going well. I've learned this past year that you never know what's going to help you connect with that child, but you use it to make sure that you meet them at their level. And right now, the topic of conversation is, "That's a different uniform." Well, yeah, it is. Come take a look at it. So we've been able to use some of this as a tool to help build those relationships and that rapport. It's going really well.
I know last meeting we approved the vehicle purchases. How's that going? I mean, is that complete and they're all outfitted, or what step are we at there?
Real close.
Okay.
Just got off the phone today with the individuals from county government. They've completed the invoicing and the titles for the vehicles. The highway department has completed the work that they needed to do on the vehicles prior to the transfer, mainly take the stickers off of them. They've completed that work. So as soon as we obtain the paperwork from the county, get them properly plated and insured, then they'll be in our possession. They are going to be unmarked right now, meaning there's no stickers on them. They're a white vehicle, fully outfitted with the lights, sirens, necessary police equipment, but no stickers on them. One of the things I've shared with multiple people, my hope is that we're able to develop a challenge with student-led design work that ultimately will end up on the SRO parks to identify them as that police vehicle. That's in the works, because three days in, I don't know that some of the teachers that handle the design work in those classes are quite ready for their student population to tackle that project. But we have started those conversations with some of the design teachers doing that exact thing. Means a little bit more to me personally if I'm riding around in my car and it's got the mark which I'll, that's kind of what we hope to accomplish with.
But the safety equipment was able to be transferred prior to, so the, I guess the best, I guess, was the main thing.
Yeah, the best we were able to obtain very quickly, because it's the transfer of those. But the vehicles, they wanted to make sure of all the markings from the sheriff department were all of them prior to transfer and wanted to make sure that they were operational doors mechanically. We were just notified yesterday and confirmed this morning.
Couple of points that, I apologize for being a few minutes late, that I picked up today at the ministers meeting. I think, what's the Communication Platform Center Square or Parent Square?
What?
Parent Square?
No.
No.
It's Central Square.
Got it.
For the police department.
It's Central Square. That, they're trying to do a lot of cleanup and we're kind of caught in the middle, because I think the MOU basically has the county sheriff as the lead administrative agency, but they're wanting to pick up not just Richmond Community Schools Police Department, but I think some of the outlying towns that haven't been part of that, so it's taking a little longer than they thought. They said they assure you that they're not dragging their feet trying to get on with the titles. I know they were being processed today for the vehicles.
I think the titles are being processed.
Yeah, the Central Square piece, what Mr. Tholz referring to is the records management system that we would use for report writing and reporting purposes and sharing of information between different departments.
The only concern that was expressed, and I'm totally confident that that's not a concern, is they want to make sure IT coordinates through various entities, but our IT to secure that as maximum security as possible for the integrity of, since there is another server that's going to, I mean, do the decision.
What I've learned in my experiences in the past, and you guys know our IT department's phenomenal here. They're one of the most secure settings, it's almost frustrating at times, but they're one of the most secure settings that I think county government has seen. We've dealt with that a little bit here recently on some of the happenstance that the prosecutor's office requires through a county front system outside of Central Square. So we were able to navigate that in our IT and their IT to accomplish.
And I think Mr. Baker and I had at least emailed, and I think you were on the issue of evidence storage and chain of custody, and Deputy Miller, I think, is the person at the sheriff, the RPD that's in charge of the evidence.
Yeah, we can continue to work on the relationship with the outside entities. We are prepared for that interim period, both on the records management system, since we don't have Central Square yet. I have to give kudos where kudos are deserved. Officer Cushing from our department was able to draft a report, records management system that we're able to use in the interim that captures all the data of that Central Square, what happened with. And then we should be able to input that data into the new system once we have access to the SRO's department, taking that under on this past week. Evidence is one area that I've reached out to the state police as well, only because of my resources of having been a crime scene investigator, I've got good connections. They're providing me with a lot of forms that we would use in that interim period until we get to the point of determining, are we going to house the evidence in our department, or are we going to use that as a partnership with the Richmond Police Department?
Chief Tholz, as you come to a close of your sharing out presentation, I think just yet again we do need notice that we, as the Richmond Community School Police Department, have been acknowledged and are identified as a police department within the state of Indiana. We have a tremendous amount of support from local law enforcement here in Wayne County, as well as with the city of Richmond. We, as you referenced, are in gratitude, debt of gratitude toward Wayne County Sheriff's Department, Richmond Police Department, campuses there at ID East, as well as even Reed Hospital, we too, now as peers and counterparts, are going to continue to maintain a high quality and consistent service when it comes to safety and security for our faculty, staff, students, stakeholders. So kudos to you as well, because as we know, and as you've highlighted, and only you know, the tremendous amount of work that went in, as well as the combined forces that came together to see this through for the sake of our beloved school community. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
At this time, President Stolz, trustees, I know in past practice with work sessions, and Chief Tholz, I apologize, sir. I'm not going to ask that you stay with us, because in past practice with work sessions, as opposed to our scheduled board meetings, we do allow for public commentary from those that are in the audience. And at this time, if anyone would like to join us, Mr. President Stolz is going to recap and read the particular protocol, but beyond that, on this issue, there may be community members that have some questions.
So don't go anywhere. Hold on a second. Okay, so for anyone who is wanting to wish to comment at this work session, maximum time to speak is five minutes. Please keep your comments fact-based and within the time permitted. Comments are not to be personally directed or abusive. Comments recognizing the work of staff and students are always welcome. However, critical remarks concerning specific school personnel or students are to be made through the complaint process available in Policy 8130. School board members can respond to public comments during the work session. And as a reminder, we're only allowed to speak on topics on the agenda. So those would include the police department update and student achievement, as well as the action item, I believe, which is the Epic Special Education Staffing Service Agreement, so.
Mr. Claypool, do we have anyone that has signed up, or is anyone in the crowd like to come up and provide commentary or ask questions?
We have two people signed up.
Okay. As Mrs. Claypool is checking the signing list.
Are we moving public commentary into our court's presentation?
What we've done in the past is after each presentation, that's when we involve public, and then we move to the next presentation, next agenda item, but no, there will be.
Are you just looking at the agenda? It was just, okay.
So in other words, if anyone's wanting to speak about the police department, this will be the time.
This will be the time.
More of an open conversation kind of, so.
So if I wanted to speak about the police department, when I walk up there?
Yeah, so again, that's the premise, is that it's a little more of an open forum. Ms. McCargus, if you would prefer to stand there at the podium, that's fine, or you can take a seat and join us here on the dais.
I'll just stand. I feel comfortable here, so I don't know if I am alone in this feeling. I don't think that I am. The police department for Richmond Community Schools, to me, kind of came a little bit out of nowhere, as in, I didn't really know the reasoning behind why we were doing the police department. As far as I've understood, we've had a longstanding relationship with the sheriff department, and we are, of course, in a time of decreasing funds, with a lot of the SRO funds obviously being defunct and stuff like that. So I'm wondering partially where the money is coming to differ, materials, training costs, cars, all that stuff, because I know that previously we were only on the hook for like the salary of the SROs, and now we're on the hook for a lot more costs, obviously. And I will say, I did quite a bit of research before coming to this, and I would be more than happy to share any of the articles that I read, but I read multiple articles, and again, to the best of my knowledge, this is true, police departments, like schools with their own police departments, do not have a demonstrated increase to school safety. And I think that what I'm missing, and what a lot of people that I've talked to, a lot of people that I've spoken with, are missing that why piece. Why are we doing this? Why are we, you know, severing that relationship with the sheriff department in order to create our own police department? Where is a lot of that money coming from? Why do we see that as like a really high priority? I guess those are some of the things that I'm kind of wondering, and yeah.
Good question. And with regard to the why, as to establishing our own police department, what we now have is the autonomy as our own police force to address our needs, unique needs within our school community like never before. For example, we had a brief, well, RPD had a brief situation earlier this week. It may have been Monday, and because of our ability to redirect, reroute, and reassign our police force to particular areas throughout our school community, our faculty, staff, and students were, there was an elevated level of safety and security, whereas before, some of those options were not afforded to us. And so the autonomy, again, with the partnerships we've had in the past, they have been great, to your point. However, there has been particular challenges when it comes to meeting all of our needs. Now having our own department, we can thoroughly meet all our needs with the same supports from Wayne County Sheriff's Department, from Richmond Police Department. Now also being able to be in the community of other police departments here within our city and the surrounding area. So it just, it really expands upon our options to keep us that much more safe. As far as the fiscal nature of your question, I want to ask that Mrs. Bowser just briefly share, to your point, I mean, yeah, as you always, have always been, Ms. McCargus, you're well informed, well prepared. In past practice, yes, we have covered the lion's share when it comes to the financial responsibility, but Mrs. Bowser, that was still in your thunder, is of finance.
Well, one of the things that I was pleased that we were able to do, because to help reduce as many of the upfront costs, was to be able to work out a wonderful partnership with the county. And I know that that was something that we really appreciated, that partnership with the county in order to transition, like our vests for our officers, you know, they're wearing the same vests that they ended the school year last year, and so they were able to retain those. And we are getting four squad cars through that partnership with the county. Twenty thousand dollars is the total tag for four cars. And to be honest with you, it's kind of a, it's no different than I say sometimes you have that ADT sign in the front of your yard. You know, it is a great deterrent, too, having that there. So I think that provides another element of safety, just having that visibility. So those funds are being paid for where your safety and security funds would, and that's the operations fund. So that's where those upfront costs came from, and I think for the majority of things, we did carry, like Dr. Wright said, the lion's share, which was all the personnel cost. So I think we're, at this point, it's very limited. Those upfront costs that we've had, like I said, will be the cars, the equipment that we were able to keep and retain, some weaponry, and but other than that, those are the upfront costs, and they'll carry a small ongoing budgetary line in the operations fund, but I think it'll be minimal, and we'll continue to look for ways to have additional available resources to be able to fund them. But something I've always said is there, you don't reduce safety in spite of anything, so you always make sure that our buildings, students, staff, and grounds are safe, so.
So Jamie, what you're saying is basically apart from the upfront costs, that the cost is going to be about the same.
It will be pretty stable.
I'll add, I've seen the articles, do you have any? I think that the, when the SRO provides across the way, I think the data says, is a school really safe? It's unclear. I mean, I think at best, I mean.
There's not like a lot of correlated evidence, yeah.
It's not like this is definite the thing for safety. I think in our community, people are asking for it, that we have SROs in schools.
Oh, yeah, I'm in favor of that.
I think as a response to board, we respond to that. But I think having our own police force, in my mind particularly, gives us the option that they can, we can become more flexible than what you would maybe have always seen in school. So as we move forward from this point, maybe we have a relaxed appearance, maybe we have a more counseling approach. So over the years, my hope is by bringing it in-house, we evolve it to an improved level. And so, because I think it's, I mean, there's, you can read whatever you want online, but you know, but our community wants SROs in the buildings. And so by having our own, whereas with the sheriff's office, I don't know if we had that flexibility. So I think there are some advantages to now having our own police force, where now we can, it will look like what we want it to look like.
I would add, too, is with the shortage of officers across the state and that hit Wayne County Sheriff's Office and RPD, by having our own department where we can, as he's talking about building our fourth position here, that really wasn't an option last year. So it gives us the autonomy to be able to kind of make it our own, and by being our own district, and we can put our staff in where it needs to be and hopefully increase the safety of the schools by having more personnel.
Attorney Crull?
Yes, whatever kind of stole my thunder, but I think the point I would want to make is, this was, I would not view this as revolutionary, it was more evolutionary, in that there was no conflict or anything. But I think the cultures of a SRO or a uniformed school police officer in the building, that culture is a little different than a deputy in a prime law enforcement office, such as the sheriff's department or the RPD. And I think, like I say, I think those nuances are, have been determined to be better addressed by the role it will take. Time will tell, and I'm sure three years from now, the department won't look like it does now, but that's to be expected.
And to piggyback on that, to bring close to our response, as member Webber referenced, member Walton and Attorney Crull, we now are at a time in which we can work to meet the holistic student need. Whereas before, of course, we get necessarily exposed to the public, some of the challenges or limitations as before, that we're looking to continue to pose and improve on, but the intention, most importantly, is to keep everyone, faculty, staff, students, stakeholders, safe and secure. Because as we know, the more safe everyone feels, the more we can then focus on student need.
If I may, just really quickly go back to what you said about flexibility. If I understood what you said correctly, and I just want to clarify, when you said flexibility earlier in your statement, Mr. Webber was using it in a different way, I think, but when you said flexibility, were you talking about like, if there is a situation which RPD is busy with, they may not be able to use officers at the high school? Was that kind of what you were saying, or was that?
Somewhat similar. In other words, wherever we have a need moving forward, Chief Tholz, his department, along with the assistance of, I want to cast a shadow on there. We still are in heavy partnership with Wayne County Sheriff's Department, RPD. They still are right at the beck and call per se, but we can really attack and address measures and matters so much more efficiently and effectively than before. So, yes, there is a lot more, but.
And my thoughts on the flexibility, specifically go to the elementary schools. Once we're back to full staff, to four officers, the previous MOU or the sheriff's department had no coverage for the elementary schools. And if there's a need, if there's a concern at an elementary school, we will then be able to cover these with our own staff.
It also allows us to really take more in a sort of position when it comes to joint take and the serving of particular rents and/or legal documentation to our patients, our community. That before, there were a few challenges here and there with some shortages, and so.
I do appreciate what Mr. Webber said, which is something I didn't think of, which is the more counseling approach, which that would definitely be very, you know, that would be definitely preferable. So I appreciate you guys, you know, kind of clarifying that. I felt like it came so quickly and with so little reasons why, that I didn't know why we were doing that necessarily.
And Tia, we appreciate you opening up this dialogue, so thank you, because that's informative for public and for everyone, you know, everyone in the audience, so thank you. Absolutely. So, all right, any other thoughts, questions, comments? Okay, and Kim, was anyone else wanting to speak on?
Not on the police department.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Chief Tholz.
Thank you.
There is someone else signed up to speak, but it's not on anything on the agenda, so you guys need to decide that.
Oh, okay. We would need whoever that is to identify what they are, what on the agenda. Okay, so Trey, if you have something that pertains to this, then, okay.
Trey, can't make just general public comment?
Not at the work sessions, at the board, at the regular board meetings, yes, so.
But if you need, Mr.? But if you need, uh, Mr. Ronnie Has something we would like to discuss afterwards, uh, I know that our team, Central Ops team is here to, to answer any questions, but as far as this, uh, open forum, uh, that's not necessarily intended to.
It's not particularly clear on the agenda. It just says public commentary like it always does. It would suggest if we're going to have the subtlety changed, then that be documented on the agenda for the future.
All right, moving on to two point zero two student achievement, Dr. Wright?
President Tholes, trustees, I want to ask that our chief of elementary education, our chief of secondary education and our chief of exceptional learning, and Mr. Brent Baker, Mark Fowler, and Mrs. Mark, who's joined us here at the podium for a brief presentation on our student achievement data. And throughout the course of their presentation, they will help us all be that much more data informed.
All right, good evening. We're going to see what happens here, here we go. I'm going to go over, um, a lot of elementary data, uh, a lot of this is going to be related to our math. Uh, I read the assessments that we took last year from the fall to the spring. So this first document shows from fall to spring, they took, they took the assessment three times, the first time versus the third time, and how our students, uh, did over that period of time. So we started with twenty-one percent of our students, three plus grade levels below, finished with eighteen percent. You can see we were at eighteen, at two grade levels below, we went to nine, um, the one grade level below, forty-eight to thirty-three. Then you can see the big difference at the top, we had four percent at mid or above grade level, we went to twenty-three. And eight percent early on, we went to seventeen. And so that is some of the growth that we saw, uh, last year in math. Questions about that slide? The next slide is by, is by grade level, uh, K through five, how our students did, uh, in the fall versus the spring. And you can see a substantial decrease in the yellow and the red, um, across, across those grade levels. He's did a nice job with this, it's going to continue to get better.
Now, did, uh, did all the elementary teachers, uh, what's the term, float with their previous class? Or was that just a handful? Just a handful of teachers did that?
Oftentimes the decision, as I have come to understand, the decision to, for an educator to move with their students at that level. A lot of times it comes down to student performance, chemistry makeup of each classroom, the need for, for class. And so you will experience some schools and some teachers moving, others will not, just when it comes down to student need.
Okay.
The next one, how our district's placements compared to the benchmarks. You can see the national norm over, uh, in the spring of eighteen nineteen prior to COVID. Then you see the spring of twenty twenty-three for Indiana, and you, then you can see our district, uh, how our students scored at the end. Um, on the third assessment versus the state of Indiana last year, we were, um, similar. We were similar, we were off a little bit at the top and off a little bit at the bottom, but very similar, um, across the board. And that will also continue to get better. This next document is from our new partner, uh, partnership with E E S Analytics. And the blue bars show our overall pass average in nineteen, twenty-one and twenty-two on the language arts I learn. The blue bar shows school districts that are plus or minus five percent in comparison to us and their performance. And then the, and the red, red bar shows the state average. So you can see that we are below the state average, but we are right along, um, above or even with, with districts similar to us.
Mr. Baker, could you explain the plus or minus?
So they take every school district in the state of Indiana, um, they have a free and reduced student population that is five percent above us or five percent above, below us, and they put us in a band to try to compare us to districts similar to, to us. And, um, that is that comparison. And that comparison is, is nice right now, but I don't, um, want to have to rely on that comparison in the future. We want to, we want to get above that and we want people to be chasing what we're doing. The math percent, uh, you can see our, our scores in red. And then the state average, um, at the top in the red line, with the red line, and then the, the people, the districts plus or minus five percent on the blue line, and we are right at that over the last two years, um, districts similar to us. Mr. Fowler?
All right, so what I want to touch on really quick is, um, I just, being new to all this data, as you can imagine, is a bit overwhelming. But I will say the partnership with E E S Analytics has been wonderful. Um, literally going into the dashboard and being able to pull out our student data and comparing it to either the state average or plus or minus five, uh, with free and reduced, free and reduced lunch schools has been amazing. Um, it gives you a really good picture of where we are. Uh, so this first slide you're going to look at is, uh, the graduation rate from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. And again, what I want to call your attention to, and, and you'll have to forgive me, in my next slides, um, I, I focused almost exclusively on plus or minus five schools like us in free and reduced lunch. And the reason I wanted to see that was, is Brent kind of gave you an overview of what this looks like district wide. And I wanted to drill down a little bit and say, how are we performing at our secondary schools compared to schools like us, right? And then we'll get to the end and talk about, we want to create distance and separation in that, we want to pass the state level. But I wanted to see what does that look like? So what you're going to see in this first slide, in, in two thousand twenty-two, ninety-three point seven percent of Richmond High School students graduated, right? When you compare that to the state average and the plus or minus five percent, we significantly outperform, um, in our graduation rates. Okay? Next one, so I, I'm going to get into some, um, specific schools. And one thing I do want to note is Hibbard is not going to be included in this because Hibbard student scores are reported back to their home school, if that makes sense. So the Hibbard Program Building, those student scores are included, um, in Dennis and Test, okay? Um, so here is the E L A scores for Dennis. Now I also want to say, not all of this data is completely accurate. Brent and I and this Mark were, are going back and looking through to make sure that all of the students were actually reported back to the sites they were supposed to. Um, but this is our preliminary data. And what you'll see is I only put one line on this chart, which is plus or minus five percent free and reduced lunch. And one of the things I want you to continue to, to see through this is that we, we are at or outperforming similar schools like us, which is not the goal we want to continue to achieve. But it does paint a picture, a more accurate picture. So this is Dennis intermediate's E L A pass percent.
So, and I want to tell you, what, what, what is not accurate is the two thousand twenty-three data. Um, Crystal Cooper right here can also test. It depends on the day, uh, today, when I got on there, it said we tested ten eighth graders in the district last year. Couple days ago, it was a hundred and ninety-nine or, and, and we have been in contact with the D O E and there's an issue with data exchange and Power School, and we are not the only district facing this. But, um, this right here is for me downloading information off of, of the I learn website. Whatever that information was that day, I didn't know the information was wrong. And I've submitted it to E S Analytics and that, that is the graph that they've created, so, uh, we are still waiting on.
So what they said when we can expect accurate data from the state?
Well, um, did you talk to him today or was Alex?
Uh, Alex, so, so that's a really good question because of the amount of issues that they are having. When they can have the data cleaned up, um, they're not sure. Um, some of the data issues with larger school corporations are going to take more time. Um, because like Mr. Baker said, the data keeps changing and they're not sure why. It's why, and it's not necessarily the scores per se, it's even the amount of kids who take it, right?
It's, it's all associated with the kids and the, like, kids are just disappearing from our schools.
Well, it's just, it's hard to make data-driven decisions.
Yeah, yeah.
When we don't, when we're not sure with the data, okay.
And, and to your point, I appreciate that clarity, uh, Mr. Baker and, and Mr. Fowler, because, uh, of what we have within our sphere of control, we're controlling that. And I think with the partnership with E E S, and as we continue to move down the road and continue to, um, evolve with our mining of data, we will have, um, almost pinpoint accuracy. Once, uh, the state thinks up their side of things. But for the most part of what has been presented, this is, uh, so positive data. Mr. Fowler?
Okay. Uh, the next one you'll see is the Dennis intermediate, uh, pass percent. And again, this is plus or minus five percent free and reduced lunch. Um, and as we've discussed, we are almost positive that two per, two point two percent is not accurate.
It's, it's, it's about ten percent. But when I went back this, today and looked at the data at different dates, it showed us at about ten percent. But that was when we had the most students, um, in the database for taking the assessment. That was, uh, June first. It, it is way off today when I, when I looked.
So next you're going to see some encouraging results from test intermediate schools. So what you'll see is they continue to climb. Um, and again, this is comparing us to plus or minus five. And one of the things I do want to call out is, um, when we had our speaker, uh, Dr. Whitman at our welcome back celebration, one of the things that was just wonderful is, is she started to talk to us about a district painting a picture using data. And sometimes that picture, um, can become obscure if you don't drill down and say, what is it that we're doing well? Um, and so she's really the one that turned us on to this plus or minus five percent to say, hey, how are you comparing to schools like you? So I do want to say that, she, she did a wonderful job, um, and Test, um, in two thousand twenty-three, uh, did a wonderful job with their E L A. They grew seven percent, um, and outperformed schools like us.
Um, and I, I'll just throw that in now. I'm fine with the plus or minus five percent, but as a board member, I'm much more interested in the state average.
Okay.
I mean, because if I move into Richmond, Indiana, and you, and that, and I don't have, I can't find that data online.
Yeah.
But, but I want to know, I want to be above state average. That's where I, minimum, that's where I want to be.
You got it.
Um, and so I'm fine that we work and we talk that way, but, you know, I think we've just lowered the bar, is what it kind of seems to me. So, I'm just, I just thought that, and like I say, I'm not, I'm not against it, I just, that's where I'm at.
And, and trustee Weber makes a, a very strong, uh, your point, and we all are in agreeance. When you look at the, uh, forgive me, but the meat potatoes, uh, of data points, we like so many schools throughout the state of Indiana, throughout the country, uh, have a tremendous amount of improvement, uh, in areas of improvement. However, as is being presented, as we'll continue to, uh, zero in and target, as we continue to delve deeper into a particular subgroups and or of the data mining, it's through progress such as the seven percent, uh, at Test Intermediate that Mr. Fowler just referenced, it's going to be in those subgroup areas as we continue to, to intentionally focus, and see progress and improvement, that those, uh, state averages that, that president Weber, I'm sorry, trustee Weber, uh, formerly president Weber, uh, had, had alluded to. And so, uh, this, this is, uh, again, giving us a, a, a target, uh, and also informing us as to where we need to continue to.
And I, I would say, I would agree with what, um, John's saying, um, for sure. Uh, as a board member, I also would love to focus on that state average and being, like, you know, exceeding that. But I guess I heard you say that earlier. I heard you say, this is where we are now, but our goal is state average and exceeding that.
No, I totally agree, and also just let you know that we're not alone. It, it shows the other ones that are same demographics as us, that, uh, we're not the, uh, low in the struggle. But obviously we want to be up, setting the bar.
But, and, and I would just caution the soul to, to, uh, remember that of those state averages, of the, uh, broad-based data points, um, those take years to move.
Yes.
That's, that's not something that overnight, I mean, it, it didn't take us overnight to find us where we are. And it may not take just as much time, if not more, to continue to move those dials. However, celebrating these small successes, these, these small successes that our faculty, staff and students, stakeholders, parents are putting forth, uh, the efforts, the sacrifices, the, the work, uh, that's, uh, again, something that we'll continue to do because such improvement in these subgroup or these subtopics will then influence improvement in the, the.
And I appreciate the feedback, that'll help us build reports that we present.
I mean, and even, I mean, you had the first slide where, I mean, Indiana's below the national norm, so I mean, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
But, but, and I guess that's, and I, I always want to come back with recap, and I just, I'll, I'll be brief. But I think that's the, the, that's something that our, our audience, the millions watching, as well as, uh, those with us, uh, this evening, should realize is that when you look at the, uh, from the apples to apples, demographic makeup of like, um, school corporations, uh, when you look at free and reduced, as, as I mentioned, when you look at exceptional learning, I'm still in Mrs. Mark's thunder, uh, and you look at other subgroups, we're outperforming some of our county counterparts. We're outperforming, uh, our state counterparts in, in particular areas that, uh, other schools have struggled. With some of our intentional focuses, with some of our, uh, practices here of, um, of late and, uh, for, for years, it's, it's, it's yielding positive, um, progress. And that's, that's, as long as our, our dial and needle continues to move in a, in a positive fashion, we'll continue to celebrate it. So, Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, this next one is the, uh, Test Intermediate Math Pass Percent. Again, you're going to see, uh, they double. And so we went from thirteen point one percent in two thousand twenty-two, uh, to twenty-seven point seven percent in two thousand twenty-three.
And, and I apologize, Mr. Fowler, but I know that when we shared that with our faculty and staff last week, along with some of the other data that you've, uh, presented, those classroom educators, they'll tell you that that's very difficult to do.
That's right.
At a schoolhouse that experienced, uh, a totally new format last year, first year for five, six, first year for seven, eight. I mean, those, those particular factors weigh a lot into, uh, these, uh, these data points. And so, uh, the community there at Test, I know, uh, was very excited to.
That's terrific improvement, no doubt.
But just for comparison, when you pulled the data from the state for twenty-three, was the class size accurate? Did it get to twenty-seven percent or what?
I don't like, an appropriate number of testers is showing up, like three hundred and.
Okay, that, that, that's my question, because I did, I wanted to make sure that.
That's a great question, yeah.
But, but again, I, I, I'd be remiss as superintendent if I didn't state this, uh, forgive me, I always leave with humility, but for the perception of some of our schoolhouses and of our school community and Test Intermediates, or Dennis Mill, or, or Richmond High School, or similar elementarys, we're getting the job done. And, and this data speaks to the, the, again, the hard work and, and the, uh, the focus that we all had in changing the respect, perception. And again, telling our own, our own story. And so, yes, we, we have a lot of work to do, but we're, we're, uh, we're, we're, yes, we're on the right track and, 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 Mr. Fowler, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, that, that's okay, I, I believe this is my last slide. And, uh, I wanted to put this up here, it's enrollment. And, uh, I wanted to end on a super positive note because, um, as you can see, for three years consecutive, we've had increased enrollment. Um, and I anticipate, uh, that we'll be at or above that. I know, um, the Fowler family has contributed forty, so, um, and, uh, we're bringing some folks with us. And, uh, you know, what we're hearing is that, uh, some of the smaller, um, class sizes around the county have, uh, gotten even smaller. Um, and so we'll take that. And, um, I think with this E E S Analytics, us holding ourselves to a really high standard for academic performance, uh, we're going to talk at the, the last slide about N I E T and the framework for instruction. Um, I think you're going to see that number continue to climb, um, and that's encouraging to me, that three consecutive years we've increased in enrollment.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mrs. Mark, welcome back.
Thank you. So the first slide that we have here is some data that I've shared with the board before, but this is our overall special education population within Richmond Community Schools. We continue to see, um, some increase in that population and then, um, compared to the state average, we, um, are above average, um, with our special needs students. The next slide is our English language learners.
Do we, do we have any idea why that trend is? I mean, are, is it diagnosing, is it, I mean, are we just diagnosing kids better?
I, I would like to attest it to child line procedures and that we do a great job of making sure that we are screening all the students within the community well and making sure that they're serviced well, that they're completely identified.
And that includes any child that has an I E P and a five oh four, just an I E P?
Just an I E P.
Just an I E P.
And this includes all students, all special ed students, the state, you don't have to deal with the same database for this.
Numbers are accurate.
Yeah.
Numbers are accurate.
Yeah.
For the, so Zaleski asked a great question. A lot of times, uh our patrons and citizens are confused about or a great clarifying question as far as five oh fours compared to individual education plans. Uh, and I know Mrs. Markle will correct me if I'm wrong, but all students are eligible for a five oh four plan given a particular need, whereas the individual education plan is more of a diagnosis to Mr. Weber's point. But yes, this is.
In fact, for the public, could we, uh, could you speak to what is a five oh four? What is an I E P? You know, just for the public knowing what we're even talking about.
Absolutely.
Thank you for.
So if I have a four plan, I'll typically be put in place for a student that has some medical needs or health needs, type one diabetes, um A D D, O D D, that needs some accommodations in the classroom. An I E P um falls under the Individuals with Disabilities Act. And um um we have a a lot or a several different categories that students could qualify for services under different eligibility. And they go through an evaluation process with our school psychologists, our educational diagnosticians. Special education teachers will do um some assessments and um some observations in the classroom as well to determine um the needs of the student. And then those services um are also determined based upon the results of those evaluations.
Thank you. My my mom was a special ed teacher, so I've been hearing about all this for years. But not everybody grows up hearing about.
And the I E P, and the I P, uh, the I E Ps are often nothing real serious. So I mean, you maybe extended time for a test or um uh occasionally having a test into multiple choice, things of that nature, am I right?
You mean the five oh four, the five oh fours tend to have the accommodations in the classroom. I E Ps do as well, but I E Ps tend to have um more inclusive accommodations that the student might need based on a disability. Yes, similar.
And those vary quite a bit from a full-time classroom to just certainly.
Is speech therapy one of the most common I E Ps? I would guess. I don't, I truly don't know.
Yeah, we have our, have over five hundred students uh who are serviced with speech and language services across the district.
This is Markle, continue, thank you, Nick.
Okay, the next slide is our English language learner population. Um, this population continues to follow the state pattern um of populations across the state and is also increasing as well. And I also just wanted to touch on our free and reduced lunch population. Um, continues to also increase and also well above the state average for the students that we are serving.
Which is the majority of our students in our corporation. That's one of the things that we shared with our faculty and staff last Friday is that when you look at uh our free and reduced population, when you look at a growing special education population, which again, we're not immune, other schools around the county, around the state are 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 experiencing some of the same growth in in these areas. But um when you look at such data and such such positive results, especially compared to now the state average, but also um our county counterparts here in Wayne and state counterparts, we're hitting the mark. And that's where a lot of our educators' focus has been toward these particular communities. And so this again is, it's it's a a deeper dive into the meat and potato data, but it really sheds a clearer picture.
So the next slide is um digging deeper into our subgroup population. And this, so this is our performant, E L A performance by the subgroups. Um, and this is a report from E E S Analytics as well. And this is our free and reduced lunch population, our E L L population and our special education. And it, the column on the, or the chart on the left is our twenty twenty-two data, and the chart on the right is the twenty twenty-three data. And so you can see some positive trends in our data where um we have some twenty twenty-two where we had a large number of students who were below proficiency. And then if you look at twenty twenty-three, that red bar has decreased significantly. And so that's positive data. We also have some where it's it's ticked up a little bit um in both below proficiency um and approaching proficiency. So again, we have this data, um and it's just now what we, how we respond to it and what we do with it.
Is this fall and spring of the same students or two different sets of students?
So this would be um students who took it in grades three through eight in twenty twenty-two and the students who took the E L A assessment in twenty twenty-three, three through eight. So it would be not all the same population of students. And the next one is our math proficiency by subgroups. Twenty twenty-two math proficiency and twenty twenty-three math proficiency. Again, same, same thing. We see some really encouraging trends in the data as we've moved some students throughout the proficiency categories. And then we also have some areas of improvement that we need to focus on. And that's where I wanted to talk a little bit about action steps before our last slide. And we're gonna talk about that on the, on the very, very last slide a little bit too. But um when we have this data, we can work together, we can analyze, we can identify gaps from multiple sources. This is just one source. This is iLearn, one source of data. Uh, Mr. Baker presented iReady, which is another source of data that we use. But when we do this, we can continue to be student centered and then data driven to continue to make progress as a professional learning organization. We can also be uh continue to be reflective with our instructional practices. And we're already on our way with that with the N I E T framework. So I think we have some great steps in place with E E S Analytics and N I E T, N I E T framework. I know putting my principal hat on, having this data at your fingertips would be amazing. And I know Chris Wilk can probably attest to that too. Taking the data that you get from the state and putting it into your own spreadsheets and then trying to organize it by subgroups just like this, this is at your data at your fingertips. It takes so away so much time as a building principal that you now get that back than to work with your teachers for those actionable steps. So I'm really excited about this platform for our principals and our teachers. The other actionable step I feel like that we're gonna take care of is targeted professional development for our teachers to help address um the needs of our students. And then, of course, the individualized support that we offer for our students through the M T S S process.
It would be interesting, probably not worth your time, but to take a decision driven off this data, track it through the year and present it at the end of the year. If there's just something that truly came out, just to, I mean, it'd just be interesting. And like I say, it's probably not worth the time for you to do it just to have it. But I would like to see that process, I think that would show that process. And then, cause I mean, it's hard for me to look at the data and, you know, kind of make really heads of tails of right now. But I'm sure you guys, you know what's driving it and you, it probably generates instantly things you wanna change or do.
And and to go into the the next slide, I I slide, I think that's what N I E T is gonna help us to do is we can look at some of this data along with building leaders and go, man, there there's some things that we really need to address. And this N I E T framework helps us to train teachers to see the same thing. And so now we're all pulling on the same side of the road.
And and Mr. Fowler, I know you're new to our corporation. And to your point, uh, we had a presentation from Fairview Elementary, as well as uh data uh has proven that that framework has yielded positive results. I think the other thing, and Mr. Weber continues to bring up a a great point, uh, as we know, our State Department and some of the uh state scoring, if you will, our State Department has recognized that uh when you test a student on a particular day in the spring, the data uh may not truly accurately represent that student's overall knowledge if that student is dealing with particular matters on that particular day or if uh other variables play into that student's performance on that particular day. Are we truly getting accurate data? And so I know that the State Department right now, and maybe still you lost under the State Department right now, is also looking at other ways in which we can measure student achievement, student performance. And then they continue to provide guidance as to what we expect. And I know E E S and Dr. Whitman, we all have met, uh, has made us privy to things that are coming down the pipe uh in due time when it comes to how we assess and measure data. So, this is Markle, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just wanna end on a positive note as well. So you look at at some of the data, they can get concerning and just remember it's one data point. For here, it's iLearn. But if we look at as we're transitioning students from our three through eight building to our high school, I just have to pull up the graduation, you know, rate again, that, you know, ninety-three point seven percent of our students graduated. Last year, we continued to be higher than the state average, higher than other schools like us. And so, you know, while we we worry about some of the data we're seeing from iLearn, just the the celebration is of of how we're getting students through and through the mission, you know, leading them on pathways of learning to a future of learning possibilities.
If I can also add, just to kind of um to brag on Elizabeth a little bit too. She, you know, as we went around and we spoke to our staff and um some of the the surveys that we've received, um training and guide work, not just for our teaching staff, but also for our paraprofessional staff. And I know Elizabeth just um applied for a grant um to provide additional training for our paraprofessional staff. And I think that that, um specifically for our special education paraprofessional staff. And I think that that's something that's very um much wanted by our current staff. And um, you know, our teachers advocated for that and our paraprofessionals advocated for that. So I really appreciate her seeking and finding that that grant.
Because of your point, I suppose, as we heard from our teachers, especially within the special education community, a lot of the paraprofessionals were signing up for particular roles and jobs. But once they got there, they realized it was something totally different.
Correct.
And that they would need a particular setup, uh professional level skill sets to.
And that's something that we saw too in some of the exit interviews was um just the the training that they needed and how best we can help provide that. So it goes to.
And I wanna give a shout out to uh Lighthouse Assembly, um offered um free training to our paraprofessionals um and staff um last Thursday, like an autism one-on-one training. So parents could sign up for a morning or afternoon session um to to get some more background knowledge and education for students that they could potentially be working with. So I appreciate their support in that endeavor of us training our parents and.
And Mrs. Markle, I appreciate your modesty and you being humble. Uh, but when you, and I know you identified the graduation rate. But for your specific department, exceptional learning, special education, when you look at the performance, and you look at the quality of instruction that's been provided, and you look at the the self-assider sacrifices that's been provided in service uh to those students, and you see the performance data of our exceptional learning world uh in community, just uh, so poodles to you all.
Thank you.
Questions other?
I have a question. Um, so we're seeing broad data, you know, language arts, math. And I know that it's broken down into categories and and goes down further. We just talked about math for a minute. Do teachers have access to, you know, those categories and the specific questions? I know as an educator, that was important to me to be able to say, oh, you know, this is an area that I need to hit more or, you know, graphing, they didn't do well in this area. That's something I need to, you know, what access do teachers have to the data? And how can they, so they can use that to to modify?
The D O E has a released items repository with different questions that that were on the iLearn assessment. But we will, we we are implementing monthly data meetings, where we will talk about our assessments and how different schools did versus different teachers did. And just to see, you know, it's not a a got you, it's, you know, hey, Dr. Wright, your kids did awesome on this standard. My kids were just average. What were you doing in your class? And so to break, to to welcome those conversations. Um, because sometimes uh an excellent teacher doesn't really know what they're doing is special because that's that's them. And um other people see that, it's hard for them to see that, so.
And that speaks to the nature of of uh, we as educators and having educators on our board, we all know that we're territorial, we're possessive, and at times, uh, we feel we work better in silos. Of the charge that our trustees have have uh put before us in creating a professional learning organization with professional learning communities, the crux and tenet of a P L O, P O C is collaboration, which is where the N I E T framework with the intentionality, the collaboration and the sustainability and some of our uh introduced practices uh in focus. It is, it's, we have um in in past practice and and again, we're not immune. Instead of now using just an ax to look at particular data, we're now taking more of a scalpel approach to be data informed uh and data driven, so.
Well, it sounds like just having the data aggregated is a huge win for us in order to be able to like, all right, so now identify those gaps, now create the action items, now make sure to move, move the achievement forward. So, thank you for explaining it all to us and presenting, and we really appreciate it. So, all right.
Before you all sit down, we also, again, after um a presentation, we ask members of our community or anyone else that would like to weigh in on this conversation, that's the intent of the work session.
Public commentary, Mr. Blunt, come on up.
Mr. Blunt, you can either remain standing or take a seat here on the desk with us.
Sure, it's fine. So I appreciate the focus on data. Is there a possibility that the board would be willing to put this in the publicly facing board docs so that those of us who.
Yes, sir.
Sit back there and you can see it? Um, it was definitely a challenge as I heard some of the commentary that was overlay didn't match what I thought I was seeing on the slides from a data perspective. So trying to understand the two and mix them together to actually see it um would be helpful.
And Mr. Blunt, I'm glad you mentioned that because she's not with us this evening, but Mrs. Hazel Baker, our marketing and communication specialist, will work into create on our website a data, mini data warehouse, if you will, so as to provide some of the clarity and.
I'm encouraged that we are talking about, how can we talk about objective data as opposed to other ways of perceiving something? So, thank you for that, but I would just ask, as we continue that process of us.
That's a great suggestion.
I just put the presentation on the public so you can see it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blunt.
In real time, thank you, Kim. All right, any others? Public commentary on this particular topic? Okay.
Mr. Baker, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Markle, thank you all.
All right, um, we now will move on to four point oh one, um, our action item. Dr. Stoltz, or Dr. Wright.
Right.
President Stoltz, trustees, I'm gonna ask this is Elizabeth Markle, our chief exceptional learning. Uh, rejoin the conversation to present for approval, action item four point zero one, Epic Special Education Staffing Service Agreement. This is Markle.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. So as we strive to provide the best education and support for all of our students, partnering with a specialized staffing company can offer numerous advantages and enhance our ability to meet the unique needs of our diverse student population. Epic Special Education Staffing has a deep understanding of the specific challenges and requirements of special education settings. They can connect us with highly qualified professionals who possess the necessary credentials, experience and dedication to cater the to the diverse learning needs of our students. Epic can also provide us with flexible staffing options based on our changing needs. Whether we require short-term or long-term placements or specialized therapists for specific interventions, they can adapt to our requirements efficiently. So tonight, I'm asking for the Board of School Trustees to approve the service agreement with Epic Special Education Staffing as presented.
All right, do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Walton, a second by Mr. Zaleski. Any questions or comments?
President Stoltz, I believe.
We have to public commentary too.
I'll just say, I appreciate the, to add some questions and appreciate the answers. I'm still not in support of it. Uh, there's no fees attached. The uh, there's a headhunter fee that I would think that we have people we would want to possibly inquire. And I don't even know if we can hire someone with a headhunter fee in that kind of position. Um, and I'm concerned it's a California company that we can't find someone in the Midwest. And so I think it will pass, but personally, I I would, I would give it a second shot if it were me. And so I will vote that way.
And can we have Mrs. Markle speak to those?
She answered everything in email, so I don't know. I I don't need any.
So the public.
Further.
Sure, absolutely. So the first concern was that, can you repeat that again, Mr. Weber?
The uh, no fees.
Yeah, compensation.
There there's no fees listed in the contract.
Oh, sure, sure. So that depends upon the position that I'm looking for. And there's a couple that I'm looking for right now. And so, once we we find a qualified candidate through the staffing agency and then we interview them and go through the process, we'll negotiate that payment. So I don't have a fee rate because I haven't been able to find somebody um yet. Once we get this agreement in place, I'm hoping that we can move quickly on filling um some positions that we have that are unfilled.
And then the headhunter fee.
The headhunter fee is for um if you, if we find somebody with this um staffing agency and we bring them on board and we really wanna keep them as a full-time employee, there is that fee. But our intent is not for that purpose. Our intent is to find people around um the area and onboard them. But this fills the temporary need of the need of the services within the I E P that need to be met right away.
Which um as a school corporation is important um because we are liable, basically, just so the public knows.
And I guess one of the steps you've taken to find people before using a company.
So um I have reached out to um local, I'm a part of I K, so our local I K's director. So I've been reaching out to them to see if they have any qualified candidates. Typically, we will share, hey, are you looking for this position? I've interviewed somebody, but you know, I'm. I've interviewed somebody, but you know, I found somebody else. So I've reached out to them, positions have been posted online, gone unfilled and no applicants that meet the qualifications.
We have also beyond just posting them online, have posted them on the state website, which also pushes it out to other hiring pools and online application portals such as, I'm trying to think of some of them indeed, and some of those other high-profile hiring apps. And we are also trying to be as competitive as we can. However, we are also waiting on our confirmed ADM because that affects our overall entire funding. And so we have a lot of our students register on the first day or within the first week. And obviously, we are still within, I think, what, today was day three, right? So we are still trying to get confirmed numbers so that we can begin increasing the competitive nature in which we're being able to attract those residents, you know, from, from close proximity. We have used a staffing resource historically that has, you know, there's two locations. One's in Ohio and one's here in Indiana. The one in Ohio is actually closer and we get more applicants from, from that pool that we've tried to utilize just because of the proximity. But they've just, they have not helped. So we're trying to expand and look at different ways that we can even, from an HR standpoint, grow our pool, application pool for these positions as well. But because of the time sensitivity and making sure that we meet the services within the IEP, that's why we are just trying to find other solutions to present so that we don't put ourselves in the case of being liable.
And that addresses the California company. Okay. Any other?
They're nationwide because it's, a lot of it's online servicing. And they have that pool that they then have their contacts throughout the entire nation, so.
Other questions?
Just to reaffirm, this is intended to be a temporary fix and not a long-term solution of replacing.
Absolutely, correct.
And the Medicaid funds that are being utilized, what have those same funds been used for in the past? That, is it taking away from other services, other items that we?
Yes. So I'll speak to that. We just started Medicaid billing last year.
Okay.
And so it's, it's not, it's earmarked for whatever we would like to use it for. And so we haven't used the funds yet. So it's kind, I like to use it for those type of emergency type of settings that we need.
Okay. Any further questions before we vote? All right, all those in favor?
Just a point of order, Mrs. Stoltz, I don't believe you can ask publicly. For everybody listening, we only have five attendees tonight, so. There'll only be five.
I got distracted. All right. Also, any public comment on the?
Given the fact, yeah, given the fact this is an action item, those in the audience can have public commentary or pose questions regarding this particular matter.
Okay.
Twice, okay.
So seeing none, we do have five board members that are present. First on the table, motion by Mr. Walton, a second by Mr. Zaleski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, and let's go ahead and do the roll call then. We've got Mr. Walton.
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Brunton?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Nay.
Mr. Zaleski?
Aye.
And Mrs. Stoltz, aye. All right, motion passes four to one. All right, moving on then to item 5.01, other discussion. Just want to open it up, if there's anything.
I think we probably need to discuss the open school board position.
I think we do. What do you want to, yeah, well, I, well.
I don't have the, I'm going to let you share the details of how to apply, but I did go back to a publication that we got when I became a board member that I thought was very helpful, maybe helpful for people in the public that were thinking about maybe applying for that position. And that the title of the article, and there's only four points, so I'll be quick, but, paint a realistic picture of a role for a prospective board member. So they have four points. One is a board member lacks individual power. And so we're a body of seven and so we have to work well with others, I'd say. And I guess the point it also makes is that if you are running because you have a personal agenda to push, that you may want to reconsider because we're a group. And the next point was board members are likely to face friction and animosity. So you may face verbal attacks for how you vote or intimidation, so keep that in mind. The third point is being a board member comes at a cost. And that, the paragraph mentions time, it's time consuming. I know we talked publicly about the amount of time. You publicly probably see the meetings online or, but there's much, there's more meetings, there's visits, there's, there's a lot of, that goes into the time of becoming a board member. And the fourth one is you have to, we have to abide by a code of conduct. And we show respect and listen to the public. And we can feel how we feel about a matter, but we have a policy that we follow. So those are just kind of a realistic, those are real things. But for me personally, the biggest thing is, you know, you care about kids in our community and you want to make a difference.
Thank you. No, that's very helpful. Kim, could you go ahead and let the public know just what the process looks like? We have, on the website, we have the application. And so we need you to fill out the application and attach a resume and either email it to me or bring it here to the administration building. And that is by August 16th, and I think we set noon. And they must be a, live in the Richmond district, it's an at-large position. So any of the districts, but in the Richmond district for at least one year.
Be what, eighteen?
I think you do have to be eighteen.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, other, other things to?
How's the, the resolution with the stipends? How's that feeling?
So that's, that's a, that's a good question. If I can, I'll just kind of recap a little bit of where we were and where we are.
So before we move away from the vacancy, I do want to, I do have a list that I've shared in the past just in regards to time commitments that gives you very specifics. So for anyone who's listening, okay, so board meetings, two times a month. We have a work session once a month and then the regular board meeting. Those are typically about two hours, give or take, 5:30 PM is when they start to, question, question mark, question mark. Executive sessions following board meetings, typically those are about two hours on average. Those are on average, once a month. One of the time commitments is reading through the board docs prior to each of those meetings. Sometimes that takes an hour, sometimes two, just depends. Responding then obviously with questions prior to, reading through school board emails, responding to comments and concerns of community members. Again, the, these are my averages, you know, average of two, two hours per week. Working group meetings, we have those typically one time a month, about one to two hours. That does not include the research that needs to be done before and after, whatever the particular items are that you're looking into. We also are strongly encouraged, but not required, to attend events such as graduation, honors and awards, celebration of excellence. May is a busy month, so you just kind of want to block off some time. Again, average of one to two hours a month, except in May when it's super busy. The new board member orientation, that is something that we provide as far as training. That typically takes about six to seven hours total. It's a one-time thing. So just want to put that out there to, a lot of time for that as well. School board conferences, that's typically once a year, sometimes twice, depending on if you're doing national and Indiana. Those are two to three days. Again, optional, but strongly encouraged. We encourage our teachers to do continuing ed as school board members. We want to do continuing ed also. And those are about four to, four to eight-hour days for those two to three days. I also had, sometimes we do research visits to other schools, school districts. For instance, when we were looking at Meridian Health Services, there was a group of us that went to Muncie, checked it out just to see, okay, what does it look like here? What does this entail? And so that's something that, you know, that sort of thing comes up maybe, maybe two or three times a year. And obviously, that's like typically a four to eight-hour ordeal. And then optional, but encouraged, visiting and volunteering in schools. And that, that could be one to two hours a week, as well as sporting events and cultural events. So those are all things to keep in mind in, in thinking, okay, do I have the time for this? Do I, you know, what, what does this involve? It's not an exhaustive list, but it's just an idea as far as what the time commitment is. All right, moving on.
I would like to encourage people that don't even have that much time. I mean, if you have a unique voice, you're welcome to apply. I mean, it's, I mean, we all I think are able to make larger amounts of times to some degree. But, but I would encourage someone that might be tired, but if you have something to offer, you know, a more diverse perspective, we have two board members with kids in the system now. I think that's always a positive. But I would, would highly encourage you to not let that time constraint be a factor to not apply.
Yep, any, yeah, any other question or comments as far as applying for the vacancy? And we're excited to see who shows up, so. All right, Mrs. Bolser. You're like, really?
Realistic.
For realistic. So just as a, I guess a recap from where we are, or where we are. As you know, the Indiana General Assembly enacted legislation under IC 2028-9-1.5, authorizing a school corporation to provide a supplemental payment to a teacher in excess of the salary specified in the school corporation's compensation plan. The Board of School Trustees of Richmond Community Schools believed that the provisions of a supplemental payment is in the best interest of RCS and its teachers to meet the academic needs of students and was necessary to retain and attract effective and highly effective teachers. RCS was at risk of losing teachers whose salary did not appropriately reflect years of experience and education. Such a supplement is by statute not subject to collective bargaining, but must be discussed with the teacher's exclusive representative. Dialogue was held with the Richmond Education Association regarding the risk of loss of teachers whose salary does not appropriately reflect or did not appropriately reflect years of experience and education, as well as other related matters on the following dates. June 16th of 2022, August 3rd, 2022, September 8th, September 12th, November 16th, December 15th, all of 2022, March 8th, May 8th, May 9th of 2023, and was to occur on May 4th of 2023. Discussion was held with REA regarding supplemental payments on the following dates. August 3rd, May, August 3rd of 2022, May 8th and May 9th of 2023. On May 15th, the Board of School Trustees passed Resolution 2023-2, which was a resolution establishing the teacher supplemental payments. The supplemental payments made under this resolution were granted as retirement credible stipends that are subject to applicable taxes and other withholdings. Bargaining unit members employed with RCS for the 2022-23 school year who received a highly effective or an effective rating on their 22-23 completed performance evaluation and then also returned for the 23-24 school year. On June 19th, REA filed a complaint of unfair practice. The ULP is challenging the legality of the stipends by refusing to bargain the salary increases in stipends. RCS believes the stipends are legitimate as they are recognized in the statute as discussion stipends. Our counsel is working on the case. We are in the preliminary stages. There was a preliminary conference on July 27th. There is a pre-hearing conference that is scheduled for August 24th. RCS is moving forward with the issuance of the supplemental payments. A $525 stipend will be distributed in two equal installments on or before August 30th of this year and on or before March 30th of 2024 for teachers employed as of August 1st of this year and then also as of March 1st, 2024, respectfully for those payments of those equal stipends. The additional supplemental payments, I'm not going to read them all, so I think everybody's a little worried. The additional supplemental payments were also awarded that will be spread out throughout the, all pay periods for the 23-24 contract year. The additional supplemental payments will begin with the first pay of the school year on August 18th and spread over 24 pays. Lastly, I would like to add that the last time I calculated the retention rate from last school year heading, heading into this school year, we were at 93%, which is up from 75% from the previous year.
So in essence, it sounds like the teachers' union has filed an unfair labor practice lawsuit against RCS for giving the supplemental pay increase. Is that what I'm hearing?
Based off of the complaint that was received, it is, they, the school corporation's actions are unfair practices under the statute by refusing to bargain the salary increases and stipends.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, thank you for the report on that. Are there questions or comments on that?
And just to reaffirm, we are continuing with the stipends.
We are continuing with the issuance of the payment and that is stated.
Even through the ULP.
Yeah, that is stated, which.
I think it's accurate or right move to continue with the stipends.
And within the complaint of the ULP, that it stated under bullet point five, the passing of the resolution results in a legal obligation for the school corporation to make the listed payments to the teachers. And as far as the request, it was not mentioned otherwise within the request to not pay those. So we, we are forging ahead and paying those beginning August 18th. And they will be spread out over the 24 pays as the addition to the base contractual amounts, so.
And I would say that that represents the will of the board as we obviously deemed the supplemental pay increase necessary for retention as well as recruitment, so.
And we did issue, after the resolution was adopted, we did issue individualized letters for all staff that were on staff at that time. So everyone has received their individualized letters stating the amounts, including that $525 retention stipend because that is for all, that's for all teaching staff that was employed during the 22-23 school year and also is retained for the 23-24 as long as they're here on those dates of which they'll be issued. Those, and were rated effective or highly effective.
And you feel like the stipends are directly related or the retention, our higher retention rate is directly related to the stipends? Yes.
Any other questions or comments on that?
A little more in depth than I was anticipating by that question.
I didn't read the.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? I just personally wanted to say what a great staff kickoff we had this year. Mr. Honeycutt did an excellent job of just laying it out there in a comedic way. Loved that guy and would love to see more of him. He did an excellent job.
You will see more of him.
Yeah, no, I was very impressed. And then Dr. Whitman, celebrating our successes from last year. And then Dr. Whitman, celebrating our successes from last year. That was, well, I mean, a lot of which we got to hear about tonight. So that was just really fun to, to get to witness and wow. So thank you guys for bringing him.
What's your overall synopsis of the start of the school year, Dr. Wright?
Of what we have seen with our own eyes, of what has been reported to us by our building level leaders as well as teacher leaders and educators throughout. We have heard that this start has been for several, the best ever and for others, one of the best in a long time. So again, I just, I would love to just take an opportunity to think how our faculty, staff, our students, parental guardians, stakeholders, and again, our board trustees. It's a collective effort, as they say in the, in South Teamwork Place, the dream. I think that as we continue to press forward, we'll continue to get positive results. As trustee Weber pointed to, or alluded to, we have room for improvement. But one thing that I'm excited as school superintendent is that we all are collectively aligning our arrows and those arrows centered and pointing toward student achievement and, and being a student center. That's what we, we should all about serving our students is in our roles.
We had a, some major projects going on. Are they completed or? I know we were cutting down the wire at Dennis, cutting the wire at the high school flooring.
Yeah.
I know there was some staff too about moving things at Dennis and not being, not having the time. Are, are we good there or?
With, with regard from a facilities standpoint and operations standpoint of the different phases that we have as a corporation and of the, the one-time schedules. Schedules have been met, phases are being completed. And that's the one thing with operations that a lot of people don't understand, it's ongoing. And of course, within your professional trade, you know that if our construction vendors are aiming and targeting for a particular mark or date to be completed, oftentimes they, they hit that. And many of our vendors hit their marks, still working through to continue to hit marks with different phases pertaining to projects. But yes, to, to answer your question, we're, we're a lot better off than we were this time last week, this time last month, and as we continue to move through that for the year, especially with certain projects, RHS certain projects that is middle and the other corporation here, projects here and there, we're, we're gonna be a lot better.
I've been part of that too, where you come in right before, before students get there too. Stuff's everywhere and you're like, uh, it just sucks.
And you come back the next year.
You gotta do it, that's, there's no way to sugarcoat it and it's tough, but.
And then again, to your point of this one, I, I appreciate of those contracted vendors or architectural firms and having been a principal going through interior and exterior innovations that had a time. At times, you, like you said, you come in on Friday, you think, how in the world is this going to be where it needs to be? It's a time we receive students. And you come back in, sorry, or that, that, the morning of, and it's right with us. And so we thank everyone for the efforts and innovations.
I wanted to highlight an opportunity for our students as well as our public. One of our partners, Richmond Art Museum, obviously attached to the high school there, is having an art opening on Saturday from one to three for a Hispanic artist, Beatrice Vasquez is her name. She is internationally known. In fact, she was the artist in residence at the Indianapolis Children's Museum. It's, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. Last year, I know when we had our exhibit, all of the high school students visited the exhibit and they have committed to doing that again this year. And so if, if those students who are going to be at some point seeing her work want to actually meet the artist, there's an opportunity for that, which is pretty impressive for little Richmond and internationally known artist here in our, on our grounds. So again, that's Saturday from one to three. All right, anything else for?
Just to begin the school year, one of the other pain points is often transportation. How has, has transportation started off?
With some comedy. I, I will, I will say, my daughter is affected by one.
Say again, I'm sorry.
It's like five years in a row, my daughter's one little affected.
Oh, she was, she was running joke, she's good. Yeah, but not this year. And so I know that she's, she's not with us. I know that she's not with us this evening, she being Mrs. Karen's girlfriend. And as we have realigned our central office leadership, I know that she has been implementing successfully systems and structures across that operational field and so many, she has so many different touchpoints. But to answer your question, I don't want to steal her thunder, that's gonna be one of the things that she actually presents to this board of, of education later this semester. But Mr. Zaleski, we are up in drivers. Y'all are not gonna know what as I say this, but we are up roughly fourteen drivers. And for a school community our size, this neck of the woods, almost next to impossible. But they've been intentional in their recruitment processes. They've seen the return and the positive yield, the investment of out of blocks thinking. But we had one late bus on day one by a few minutes. The driver saw the young student in the rearview, chose to return, didn't want that student to be late for school. Outside of that, our buses have been on time for drop off as well as pickup. And as of even this afternoon, all buses were clear just about after four o'clock, which for a district our size, that's, that's quite impressive. All students were home safely.
Have they started, have they implemented the GPS tracking of the kids?
And so yes, with those technological advancements as, and again, that's one of those phases, if you will, that will be implemented here within the next few weeks. What our community can expect is that our students will have the opportunity and access to swipe in and swipe out of their, their bus experience. Parents will have an opportunity to track the bus and track their students. And so we are equipping and have been working to equip our buses with the latest and greatest when it comes to technology to keep things safe, keep our parents informed and try and reduce the amount of calls to the transportation part of our school. But no, it's, it's coming together.
How's the, I know we were emphasizing cell phones this year, how's, how's that working?
As far of changes that we made.
Not using cell.
Yes, of, of the, of the revisions, as well as just sheer enforcement of codes of conduct of what we've heard, things been going off. And that may be because students are still in the honeymoon period, but thus far, that's the one thing as we know, as classroom teachers. Oftentimes when you introduce change, there is pushback here or there or questions. But eventually as it becomes routine, people really start to see differences. And most importantly, most importantly, we are then therefore able to zero in and keep our attention focused on student achievement and nothing else.
Mr. Walton, based on my two high schoolers frustration coming home, not being able, I think it's been pretty effective. They, they voiced their frustrations about not being able to access their phones in class.
So Mr. Val, brings I know, I promise this, the one thing that I think our community, parents and guardians, and even students need to understand is that we have resources within our schoolhouses. That if there are emergencies or if there is a need for students to be either contacted or to reach out to loved ones and, and parents and guardians, we have those resources. But by zeroing in and allowing our teachers to focus on instruction and focus on instruction and not necessarily three students that may be distracted because of devices or even because of other factors. And so I would encourage even our, our parents and guardians who sometimes may call in to students or send particular messages to students, just be cognizant of the fact that our goal is to continue to improve our student achievement, continue to improve upon the data that was presented this evening. The way in which our teachers are best at doing that is when the only focus is on them because they're the most important people in our classroom.
I do have to give kudos to the band finishing in the top ten. Once again, I believe that made fifty three out of fifty six years. So just an amazing history. Amazing, rich history of, of success there, so.
There was four or point four, three, five or four, seven, five, oh, point. They separated third through sixth.
Wow.
Third and fourth actually tied and they went to a tiebreaker, which I can't remember off the top of my head what it was. But it was, it was pretty crazy. Saw Dr. Wright there, tons of family and parents and friends, people that participated. It was, they did their best performance of the year that evening. The morning show, we were like, you know, kind of, something which wasn't right, but still finished fifth in the morning. And which I was, I was like, okay, maybe, maybe I was just over analyzing some stuff. But I thought the evening performance, we were on point and they brought their A game and they, they did really well.
And to Mr. Walton's point, competition, as we know, can bring out the best or the worst in people. I always leave with humility, but forgive me, in exercising how proud I was as a superintendent of our band, I was in total disagreement with the replacement and the results that you see. I felt that at the very least, we were second place, if not first. But right again, those youngsters, the band directors, the, the parental sponsors, the groups, our community, the outpouring of support, the folks, they, they were so deserving of. So I was, I, I didn't come away happy camper as a former ball player. They felt as if we just left Newcastle and got a little home cooking and it was a, it was a very frustrating experience. Come to it, but no.
But loved, loved the French motif and overall très bien.
I would say shout out to all of our RCS students who had projects at the state fair as well, because I know quite a few.
Yes.
All right, anything else? All right, we will adjourn. Thank you very much.